Welcome to Town Hall 2.0. Thanks for your patience with us. Let me tell you what we're doing here. On Monday night, when we were trying to stream this live, we had a technological banana peel we slipped on, and it just didn't work for us. And so we thought this was important enough that we would redo the front end, about fifteen or so minutes, and then we'll pick up what we streamed live on Monday night. So if you get all that, this is going to be kind of the introduction, and a couple of the ministry presentations, and then we're going to go to what was actually live on Monday. So, a few instructions. What is a Town Hall all about? We do this one time a year, where we give our church family the opportunity to catch up on the ministry things that have been happening, where we see Jesus alive and working in the stories and lives of people, and we're delighted to share that with you. We also want to give you a financial update from year 2022, and an oversight of our budget for 2023. But this is all about interaction, so how do you do that when we're doing it after the fact? Well, you're going to see a telephone number still come up on your screen. You can still text your questions if you have those along the way, and feel free to do that. We may not get back to you in like, in the moment, but somebody will respond back to you if you do have questions. All right, so here's where we started the other night. We are central to what we do is this overall idea that we follow Jesus Christ, that the church is His, it's what He spends all His time working on, He's perfecting her. The Scriptures refer to the church as His bride and His body, and so we take it really as a sacred thing that we're working with Jesus on. And as such, He's the center of our church. So we think in this kind of terms. We think of who we follow, and then He tells us why we do it, and then we work through with Him, what our "what" and our "how" is, and that's how we think through as a lead team at our church. So if we start with "who," that's obviously Jesus, but back in, when He was just before He departed, in Matthew 28, He gave some instructions to His followers, which actually were instructions for us as well. Where He said, "Go into all the world and baptize people, and teach them to obey everything that I've taught." And He promised to be with us all throughout the rest of human history, and well, we're part of that. So for us, what we think through, if He's the center of, well, like, what's our "why" in this? What has He given us? So that passage informs how we state it. We state our "why" is this: "We want to help each other increasingly do the next moment with Jesus, so do life with Him." We think that that translates into increasingly thinking like Him, and then ultimately being mistaken for Him. That doesn't mean we become Him, but the Scriptures speak over and over again that by His Spirit's power in us, we increasingly are representative of Him in this world. Now the question is, so how do we do this? Well, I want to put something up on the screen that's kind of central guiding principle for us. It's a process of how we want to see people fulfill that mission, and we think it's consistent with what Jesus would have us do. So this is what it looks like. You can see the circle here. It's got five points on it: doubting, exploring, growing, close, and centered. And what our emphasis is, is we want to make sure that we don't lose any one of those five important values here. So we start with doubting, and you need to know, like, around this circle, and this is what you're going to hear, is we budget off of this circle, we staff off of this circle, we envision what we're going to do out of this circle, and it really is a guide for us. So we think that folks around where we live, where we go to school, where we play, where we live our lives, we've been placed there strategically by Jesus because there are people who He loves, who they doubt that He is real, or they doubt His love for them, and we get to influence them. So we want to keep that front and center, but we want to help people who are doubters become explorers. Now, the way that we do that is that responsibility lies with each one of us, where we live, where we work, where we play, where we go to school. But we have some key support elements that we add to that. For example, we have a coffee shop on our campus. We have Center for the Arts, and these are tools that we think that we can all use and invite people to, that maybe are doubting skeptics or, you know, cynical about Jesus, and they might just, through the course of some conversations similar to what Jesus has with a woman at a well, those conversations might turn into deeply meaningful, life-transforming conversations. But it is all of our responsibility to connect with people around us, to help them, as they doubt and they're cynics and skeptics, to become explorers. And then once they become explorers, there's a whole variety of ways, again, that we want to support that exploration and get information and help them come to a place of deeper understanding. Our key way is through our weekend gatherings and artistic expressions in that, and how we worship and how we teach, but that's our weekend gathering. And we really are convinced that along the way, God's Spirit is going to move in people, and they're going to say yes to Him and have that transformative moment where they become spiritually alive. And now, we want to help them grow. And the primary way that we do that, we do other things, but this is the primary way we do it. We encourage people to get into small hottles that we call life groups, where they learn together, love together, they share experiences together around their growing faith, and they pray for one another. And so we really encourage that as a place of growth. There are other gender-oriented ministries that we do around that, but life groups are the primary place. And as they grow, we think there's a hunger and a longing for a deeper spiritual experience. So we provide spiritual formation, events and experiences that people can be part of, whether it's going on a mission trip or going to the Grand Canyon, a variety of those kinds of things that are meant to keep people moving in a growth path. And then ultimately, we want to get to a place in all of our lives where our lives are fully centered on Jesus Christ. And we think it's out of that centered place that leaders are developed, ministry grows and expanded, and so we specifically focus on that. So that's our process. Now, what we want to do for the rest of the time is give each one of our ministry heads an opportunity to tell you what's going on in those areas. It's kind of vision fulfillment and what their hopes and expectations are for going forward. So we're going to start with doubting, and I want to invite Kathy Beechey to come. Kathy is our Center for the Arts director. Fantastic job. Great things are happening there, Kathy. So take a couple of minutes and tell our church family what's going on.
Absolutely. It is such a privilege to lead our team at the Center for the Arts because we at the Center for the Arts have the great privilege of showing the life-changing and eternal power of Jesus' love, using the arts as our primary tool. We're always working on exciting things to offer to our community, but right now, we very much are looking forward to our third annual dance recital, which will happen right here in May. Our summer camp season has already kicked off, and we look forward to that happening in June. And then our first annual private music studio recital will occur this fall. We're so excited to celebrate the good work of all of the students who have been working so hard. And we get to celebrate them when we do these big events, and so we very much look forward to that. As I look back on the past year, and even the past couple of weeks, the overwhelming win for us is the community response to what we're doing. We prayed from the very beginning of Copper Hills that the surrounding community would be glad that we exist, and that they would fully participate in the things that we're doing, and consider our space to be part of their space. And we really feel like, based on the community response, that is happening. Did you know that we have 213 adults and kids taking private music lessons at the Center for the Arts? It's amazing. We have over 270 adults and students dancing in our two beautiful dance studios. This spring, we had over 100 adults taking a variety of artistic classes like watercolor, basket weaving, creative writing, ink art, blanket making, I mean, a whole variety of artistic classes that we offered. 100 adults from our community did that, and lots of people actually brought a friend. People from Copper Hills decided, "I'm going to grab a neighbor and come do a watercolor night." When our summer camp registration opened two weeks ago, the response was so overwhelming, camps sold out that fast. And so we opted to offer a few more opportunities so that more kids could be included. We anticipate about 300 kids on our campus in June over the course of 17 summer camps. I tell you those numbers not because the numbers themselves matter. The numbers actually don't really matter, except that every single number represents a person who walks on our campus, and usually not alone. The kids in particular walk on our campus with a parent and often with younger siblings. But the numbers represent a person who walks on our campus and walks through our doors, someone who God created in His own image and considers to be a masterpiece, who Jesus died on the cross for. And yet, they may not understand that yet. They may not yet understand the life-changing power of Jesus' love. And so when they come here, it is our privilege and frankly, responsibility to help share that with them. And so in that way, the numbers absolutely do matter. Let me read an email from one of our new instructors. His name is Che. He is one of our new guitar instructors. He is the coolest cat around. I hope you have a chance to meet him sometime soon. He has a student who is just kind of on the struggle bus. He's just having a hard time physically, emotionally, mentally, just life is hard for him right now. Che sent me this email a couple of weeks ago. "Kathy, I just wanted to share with you that the lessons with," and he named the child, "are going very well. I asked his dad if he is religious. He shared that they are Hindu. I told him I believe in Jesus, and asked if they mind if I pray to my God for His Son. I wanted to pray that God gives peace to His mind and gives Him a love for music because God gave us this gift of music. To my surprise, the father said, 'Yes, please pray for my son.' While praying, I had this thought: What if God heals this boy? What if his family comes to know Jesus? Kathy, I want you to know, I am committed to taking every opportunity I have to pray for them and to share the gospel. I am super encouraged, and I just wanted you to know." This, this is the heart of the Center for the Arts. This is the heart of the teachers at the Center for the Arts, that we would take interest, that we would take notice, that we would see people genuinely and love them authentically, and that the love that our teachers have for Christ would come out through them in conversation and intentionality to share Jesus' love with their students. So if you think about us, would you pray? Would you pray for our instructors that they would be bold in their faith? They are amazing artists. We know that the great art will happen. Would you pray with us that there would be wide-open doors and intentionality to share Jesus' love? And pray for the people who come on our campus to participate, that their hearts would be open to receiving it, that they would feel welcomed and seen and heard, and would continue to be enthusiastic and participate. It's just such a great privilege. We think it's the best gig around. We love what we get to do. Thank you for supporting us. And would you pray with us that we could just continue to grow the Kingdom of God right here in North Peoria? I'm going to hand it over to Kevin Cabala, the amazingness that comes out of the Well Coffee Company. Here we go.
Thanks, Kathy. You know, Well Coffee supports Center for the Arts. We work together in same purpose, same vision. And one of the cool things is we have, they have one of their classes on a Friday night on like, on a certain cadence where you can do coloring, watercolors. You can do it as a date. You can do mom-daughter, husband-wife, however that works, and then you get really good coffee. So it's really cool to watch the arts and the art of coffee come together. So you should check that out if you're wanting something to do. The Center for the Arts covers all ages. There is something to get your creative juices flowing. And you know, it's interesting because speaking of coffee, we do it very creatively. We're just, we're not a church coffee shop. I want to explain that. We are a high-level, third-wave coffee shop, and we do it with incredible excellence. The reason why we do that, we bring in the top Q-graded 1% coffee in the world. We use high ingredients, everything, I could totally nerd out with you on how we make our coffee and what goes into it, so that you could see even the training and the level that we do it with, at a high expense. We literally continue to grow in sales, but our profits are just kind of flat using all that money to go back into the quality, the training, and the level that we want to serve coffee to you. We do that level, that high level of everything because what we want to portray and communicate to our community is, "This is what we think of you. We think you deserve the best. We think you are the best. We think that you're amazing, and we don't want to short you in any way, shape, or form." There's so many businesses and places that you can go that they're in it for other reasons, obviously for the bottom line, for money. And there's going to be some places where they take shortcuts and they deliver less than what you would deserve. We don't want to be that. We want to give you more than you deserve. We want to give you more than what you could even think of and be exceptional. Also, so that when you come and you bring neighbors or business people or whoever else into our coffee shop, you know that they're going to be loved, that they're going to be in an environment that's safe and healthy and just very enjoyable, so that then you can take that time to have a relationship and build on those relationships. It's really amazing coffee. They're amazing baristas. All those things are excellent. But I want to tell you the "why." It's that relationship. We are building a space and a place where community comes together and community matters. And we see that all the time at the Well. We see relationships build and grow. We see businesses form. We see neighbors meet up. We see neighbors get to know each other. We actually have times where we're helping students with their homework and sending them off to school, even with a lunch, because they forgot one. We are seeing people who are lost or struggling or in pain or in sorrow, and we can take notice and interest of them while they're getting coffee, and we can do something about it. Our baristas have gone to people's houses and celebrated with them in their best of times and places. And we've actually been to funerals with them. We've visited them at senior homes, or we've gone to some of their events because one of the children wanted me to see him in a flag football game, so we went and attended that. It's just so cool how it connects, and there's an opportunity in community. We want you to use Well Coffee. We want you to pray for Well Coffee, but we want you to come and use it and be part of it, and take notice and take interest. Your investment in Well Coffee is your attendance, and you noticing the community that's around you. My greatest joy is that now, being part of Well Coffee, I easily know over 300 people in this community that I did not know before. And I know all kinds of things about them. Their dog's names, their places that they like to shop or eat, running plans and programs, just all kinds of stuff. Family, grandparents, when they bring people from out of town, and it's their joy to be there. The last part I want to tell you is these stories of its working. It might start off in Well Coffee, and they had no idea that there's a Center for the Arts. They had no idea there was a church, and it becomes a safe place to get coffee and feel loved and appreciated. But there's this place where the Spirit prompts us, and we can go further and deeper. And we have many, many stories where people started in the Well, and now they know Jesus, and they've accepted and received Him, even gone through baptism and started to come and attend church here. Isn't that amazing? It's just such an opportunity to take a doubter into exploring and to grow and develop their life with Jesus. There was a guy here named Dave, who's one of our cyclists, and he personally has brought five of his cycling buddies who did not have a relationship with Jesus, and through the Well and through continued pattern after pattern of coming there and doing their cycling ride and then meeting there, he's introduced them to Jesus, and he feels like all five of them have come to a place of now they're saved and have a life in Christ. It works. So pray for Well as well, and get into the Well and take notice and interest of your neighbors and your community because it really matters. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Kevin, Kathy. What a great job that you guys are doing. I so appreciate what you're doing for Christ in this church, in those particular areas. So that, on our circle, if you go back to that for a second, that's the doubting, exploring piece, where it's turning people into explorers. That's what we would hope would happen. So I want to look at the second part, and that involves our exploring area, particularly focusing on our weekend gatherings and on the creative arts that we have here. So we all know that in the last several months, we've had a transition of our worship pastor, who's with us for 10 years, and many of us have kind of grown up under his leadership. And we're so grateful for Butch and his leadership. And so that raises the question, what are we going to do going forward? And what does that look like? Well, one of the key leaders that we have here is our creative arts pastor. His name is Michael Marshall. Some of you haven't had a chance to meet him. He's been here for six months or so, doing a great job and working through the transition and raising up leaders. And so I want to introduce Michael to you. He's going to come and tell you a little bit of what the plan is in the kind of new reality of looking for a worship pastor. But Michael, why don't you come on up, tell us a little bit about what is happening, and give us some direction on that, and share what's happening, the good things in our worship arts area.
Thank you, Brad. Yeah, so we are actively in conversation with different worship pastors, and we're just truly praying that God would bring the right person, that He would open the doors and just open our heart, open theirs to what it is that He's doing here at Copper Hills. So our prayer and our hope is that within the next six months, that we would be able to identify who that person is and just continue to move forward and see what God does here at Copper Hills through, just through worship and through all things creative arts. So in that transition, I've just been so encouraged and excited to see our current team that's in place, that's just raising up and just accepting the challenge and continuing to lead so well. So I've been excited. I've been encouraged by that, and I'm truly looking forward to see what God does in this season to come. And as we look ahead, as a team, we've been just praying and dreaming on what it looks like to help bring worship across this campus. So not only in adults, but in students and in kids, and how we can partner with the Center for the Arts and be able to help raise up those students and where they're able to be a part of the ministries here at Copper Hills and where we're able to pour back into them. So I know that that is something that we're actively pursuing in the weeks and the years to come, is how can we take the arts and allow it to be a part of our whole campus, no matter what age group, no matter what room, that we're truly using the arts to be a reflection of Christ and to raise one another up and sharpen one another, and to know that what we get to do is so much more than art, so much more than music, so much more than dance. But we have an opportunity to use it as a tool, to really invest in people's lives. And it's been so amazing for me to get to be a part of music ministry for as long as I have. And in that, I've gotten to see that, no matter the age, the age gap, that through this type of ministry, that we have the ability to connect with those that may have 10, 15, 20 years on us. But it's through that connection of art, of music, of production, that we're able to take it beyond what it is that we get to do on a stage and actually do life with one another and be a reflection of Christ. And so that's our mission and our goal as a creative team, is to use the arts as a tool to actually do life and ministry with people. It's so much more than just playing music or pushing buttons or paintings. But we have an opportunity to truly be a reflection of Christ through the arts. And it's always amazing to me, and I continue to say this, but the power behind music itself is like, we have the ability to teach people Scripture through the song that we sing. You know, oftentimes, people aren't out here memorizing a sermon, but what we're able to teach through art, whether that's we're putting a verse in a painting or the lyrics that we sing, we have a powerful opportunity and tool that we get to use to teach people who Jesus is through just art. So that's our mission, our goal as a team here at Copper Hills, is to just allow God to work through us and that we would take it beyond just being creatives, but we would look at it as truly an opportunity to be a reflection of God and to allow that music or being a part of the tech team or a part of the Center for the Arts as an opportunity to show Christ to somebody. And so I know as a team, that's what we're looking forward to continuing to do and just praying that God will continue to bring the right people with the right hearts that are passionate and on fire for God. Especially in a time such as this, I know all over the world, everyone's just allowing things in that maybe they shouldn't. And we believe that now's the time where we should truly rise and reflect Christ in all that we do and not waver. So as you think about us, just continue to pray that God would continue to bring the right people with the right hearts and that we will continue to just aim to be a reflection of Him to everyone that we get to meet.
All right. Thank you, Michael. I think it's just amazing how you've grown the team, developed the team, supported the team through the transition. I think our 25th birthday a couple of weeks ago was just a prime example of how a team came together and led in just a wonderful way. So thank you for that. Okay, so what we're going to do now is we're going to pick up the live streaming that we captured on Monday, and we're going to go to that. I want to remind you, there's a phone number on your screen that you can still text your questions to. And thanks for joining us, by the way. We're grateful for that. Now we're going to turn it over to that and pick up the rest of the evening. So Paul, come on up here. Paul is our spiritual formation pastor, and he really oversees the next two pieces, which is growing and close. And so, Paul, start us off with life groups because that's the primary piece in that kind of growing place.
Hola, me llamo Pablo.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Wait. I've just been in Mexico. I got to turn my brain back to English. Sorry, I just got back a couple hours ago. That was supposed to be funny, you know, just lighten up a little bit, all right? So it's okay. We're going to have a good time. Yeah, absolutely. We have so many opportunities for people to grow in their faith here at Copper Hills. And our primary vehicle for that is life groups. And so our life groups, the main thing we try to do is encourage people in these areas of learning, loving, doing, and praying. And our life groups are going really well. We've had over 25 life groups last year, and this year, we've already added seven new groups. We've plugged in about 85 new people into life groups. There's still needs for more people to get plugged in and get involved, which is great. I still have people that are waiting for a certain night or a certain day or a certain location. So continue to be in prayer for people that could be hosts, people that could be leaders, as there's still more people that want to get plugged in. But in our life group ministry, it's growing, it's thriving, and people are doing all of those things: learning, loving, doing, and praying. Just to give you a couple of reports of some of those opportunities, over last year, we encouraged a lot of our life groups to go on a spiritual experience to the Grand Canyon. This gave them an opportunity to learn and love together as a group outside of just their weekly study that they get together for. How many of you, out of curiosity in the room, went on one of the Grand Canyon trips? I can see some of you out there, yeah. And it was just a fabulous experience. We had over seven life groups do that together, and they all came away just having an amazing experience, mostly with God as well as with each other. So we want to encourage some of you, if you're here today and you're in a life group, that's an opportunity for your life group to do something together like that. Also, right before the 25th anniversary, we spent a whole week focused on prayer. How many of you in here got involved in any of the prayer stuff that we did? Yeah, it was great. We had somebody at every single day, in either the morning, the afternoon, or the evening session. And we had people that were coming back to multiple times because it was so powerful for them. And so it was just a great experience, and we'd like to use that as a way to kickstart even more prayer opportunities throughout the course of this next year. So those of you who you feel like prayer is a way you really connect with God, look for more opportunities that are going to be coming with that. Also, for the last couple of years, we've been reading through the entire Bible together as a church community. It's been a really unique experience where someone was reading the Bible all the way for 72 hours. And this year, we're going to be doing that, coming up quickly, where we're going to read through the New Testament together. So if that's something you're interested in doing, that's going to be between the night of Good Friday all the way up to Easter morning. So if that's something you're interested in doing, look for that on our website. All the information about life groups and the things that we do are on the website. You can just go there to find that information. So again, if you have any questions about life groups, feel free to reach out to me, text me, call me, talk to me after this is over. But that gives you kind of a good idea of the life groups. Another way that our people here at Copper Hills are really growing is through gender ministries. We have people involved in men's ministries, women's ministries. And when I got here, we only had like, one or two options, and now we have a plethora of options for people to get involved in. And both of those ministries, with men and women, have been growing. More and more people are involved. I see some of you in the room that either lead these groups or are involved during these groups on a consistent basis. And so I just want to say thank you to those of you who are serving and volunteering in those areas. You are making a difference, and you're helping the people of Copper Hills grow in their faith. So if you have any questions about the gender ministries, life group ministries, feel free to reach out to me.
All right. Do you want to cover that spiritual formation piece as well? You mentioned the Bible studies already. Those are primarily...
Do you want me to jump into the other ones as well?
Jump into that as well. Like, you just came back from this incredible mission experience, which is certainly wanting to reach a family with the love of Christ, but there's a dual purpose to it, isn't there?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'd love to tell you about a story that's hot off the press. Yeah, many times, we think that when we go on these missions experiences, it's about us helping others. But that does, that does happen. We do help others. But it also empowers the people within our own group, our own family, to grow in their faith exponentially. We've been going to the Navajo Indian Reservation. We've been going down to Rocky Point, Mexico for the last couple of years consistently to those different places. And we've really seen a lot of traction by going back to the same places and loving people and developing relationships with people throughout the way. We love that it's not just a one time and we're done and we're gone. So for instance, we just took a little over 50 people over the last two weeks down to Rocky Point, and we're pretty much the only church that goes for two weeks in a row and sees a house. and sees a house completed from start to finish. And I just want to share with you how um when we just get out of the way and we let God do his thing, some amazing things can happen. So one of the things we do is we don't be in control of the family that we're gonna build a house for. We leave that up really to God and to the missions organization that we work with called One Mission. And so we just found out about this story, and it unfolded throughout these last two weeks as I was there. I only knew a part of it, and then we've gotten to know more and more and more. So real quickly, I want to share the story with you. So um there's a guy that I've become a friend with who's a local down there in in Mexico and Rocky Point. And he's basically, his primary job is to build homes for families as a local that lives in the area. So he is a Mexican native. And he has been seeing how our church has been doing something different than all the other churches that go down there by spending a two-week block of time seeing a a house from start to finish. So a couple of months ago, there was a guy that received a home in the community, but he had ill health. And long story short, he actually died before his house was completed. The process to complete building a house sometimes can take up to six to nine months because churches don't just come down and go start to finish. One church starts it, another church comes later, does something in the middle, another one sometime later, and then it's eventually done. And this just broke my friend's heart named Harris that the the recipient didn't get to see that in completion. So a couple of months ago, there was a new family that he's been vetting. They've been serving hours in their community. His name is Ramon and his family. And Harris noticed that Ramon has really ill health. He's in his fifties, he has high blood pressure, and he has diabetes. He's been unable to work for a while. He used to be a construction worker. And I didn't know this until just two days ago, that Harris felt God saying Copper Hills needs to build the house for Ramon and his family. He's feeling like, what if Ramon were to die like that other guy before his house would be completed? So Ramon is married, he has two children, Esteban who's twenty-three, and his daughter Carla who's eighteen. And so we only knew kind of that part of the story. We started praying during our prayer week for their children, for their family, that we would be able to just somehow share the love of God with them. So when we got there with our first group, after the first day, we really only mainly got to see Ramon because the son is working in a bank, the daughter's going to culinary school, and the mom is also working because Ramon is unable to work right now because of his health conditions. So long story short, another guy who works for One Mission named Carlos, who we built a house for last year, Carlos is a strong Christian. Carlos was working with us that first day, and Carlos was spending a lot of time with Ramon, talking with him in Spanish. I was noticing what was going on, just seeing how Carlos was taking notice and taking interest of Ramon. As we were done, we pray at the beginning, at the end of every day that we build. As we were done praying, I asked for Carlos to pray in Spanish. And when he was done, I could see Ramon was crying, he had tears coming down his face. Everyone was getting into the van, and I just kind of tried to tune into what Carlos was saying in Spanish. And basically, long story short, Ramon was saying, I I don't I don't have words for this. This isn't making sense to me. Why are these American people here loving me when I don't know them? Why are they building me a house? I can't understand this. And Carlos was saying, they're just wanting to show the love of Jesus to you. And he goes, how do I how do I get the love of Jesus? He's like, you can actually get the love of Jesus right now. Would you like to accept Jesus even right here, right now? Carlos was saying to him in Spanish. And he said, absolutely. And Carlos took took his hands, and he made Ramon raise his hands, and he held one hand, and I came over and held the other hand, and we prayed for him over the next five minutes. And it was a beautiful moment to watch Carlos pray for for his brand-new friend in that community. Ramon accepted Christ that very first day we were working, and it was very powerful. There was a young high school boy that was on our trip with us who openly said, you know, Paul, I'm not really a Christian, I'm not really religious, I don't really believe in all of this. But to show you how it impacts our own group of people, this young high school boy said, I saw what happened over there. I watched that guy Ramon accept Jesus. He said, that's one of the most beautiful spiritual things I've ever seen in my life. This is a sixteen-year-old boy who's not even a follower of Jesus, and he was impacted by that moment. Does that make any sense? Pretty amazing. Well, throughout the course of the next couple of of weeks, we met his his daughter, his son, his wife. And long story short, um just yesterday, um as we went to the house in the morning, uh Ramon has been sleeping at the area where we build his house, and it's gated and it's locked so that no one will come and steal all the things and the progress that we're making. And uh Ramon wasn't there. He's been there every morning to greet us, unlock the gate. And I was calling out to Ramon, and he wasn't answering. And myself and another guy on the trip, Nate, we felt like, do we need to like jump the fence? Like, what's going on? Why isn't he there? And after a couple of minutes, just before we were gonna do that, he came out of his house and right away, we could tell something was wrong. And he was about to pass out, and Nate Nate started jumping the fence, and then this old man tried to jump the fence. I did, I scratched my legs up and everything. But Nate and I got over the fence, and we grabbed him right before he passed out. And a long story short, he's in the hospital right now, and it looks like he's gonna need uh dialysis. He's got a lot of problems with his with his kidneys. And we've been, his his son and daughter have just been in my arms crying, wondering if their dad is gonna live. And it's just crazy to me to think that the God of the universe had it in his plan that we would come and build this house for this man, that he would have the opportunity to hear the message about Jesus. I don't know if he's gonna live or not, and um I'm not, I I'm just trying to show you how just crazy this stuff is. You can't make this up. This is not like a movie. This is what just went down. And so we didn't even, when we left, Ramon was still in the hospital. And his son has just been like weeping in my arms, his daughter. And so we've, this has been a powerful experience, not only for that family, but for all of the people in our group that just came back. It will be something they'll never forget. It's gonna stick with them the rest of their life. So that's why we do these types of things. It's making a difference on both ends. For the people that we're meeting and loving, and for our own people, this will be a spiritual memory that they'll never forget. So I probably went a little over time, but I just thought that that story needed to be shared since it just happened.
Will you will you pray for Ramon so we can join?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Join me in prayer. God, I I continue to just believe that you are real. I know you're real. Even though I've I've never seen your face, I've never touched your hand, um I I believe that you're real. I see you orchestrating events throughout history beyond me and in my own personal sphere of influence. And I I can say no other thing that it's you. It's you, God, you're in control, you're you're guiding and you're leading. And I thank you so much that we had the opportunity to meet Ramon and Alicia and Carla and Esteban. I thank you so much that we got to love them these last two weeks. God, they'll forever be in our hearts and our minds. Uh they're our friends, we can't wait to go back and visit them again. And God, right now, um we just unashamedly ask for health for Ramon. We don't want him to die. We want him to live, to see this house, to live in this house, to be able to continue to love his family and lead his family. We really also want to pray for his children right now. I know they're just so scared, they're so stressed, they're so anxious, they're so worried. They they don't know what's gonna be happening in the in the next coming days. I pray, God, for the church, that we've asked the the local church there to rally around them and to support them and love them. I pray that those relationships would come about quickly and that there would be a community right there in Rocky Point that was, they would just love one another and support one another and encourage one another. And last, I just want to pray for Alicia as the mom, of what she's thinking and how she's gonna hold this all together. God, I just pray that you would comfort her and let her know that she's not alone, that you'll never leave her and forsake her. So God, we thank you for the family that we've met and become friends with, and we place them in your care as we're away from them. We're just gonna continue to pray. It's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen. Thank you guys very much.
Just hold on one second, we're gonna get to leadership community here in in just a second. So there's two other pieces up there, financial peace university. We've done that six straight years. Uh this last year, we're up to like six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of personal debt that's been released from people's lives to give them freedom. We're just working on something, a pre-marriage mentoring uh group. We have uh, we would like to do two or three times a year where a couples who are considering getting married would actually be able to be with other couples and get prepared for that kind of significant decision in their life. So we're still working on that, along with this uh next year, we're we're doing some things around spiritual gifts as well. So those are all in that area of spiritual formation. And then leadership community is the next piece. So doubters, explorers, growing, close, centered. This is reproduction, this is the developing of leaders, developing of young leaders. Uh our church is led by elders. We have a lead team of four of us, uh senior pastors, we're all old, aren't we? Yeah, so that's Kevin, Paul, Jim, and myself. And then our ministry team, which many of them you're seeing here tonight. So that's kind of how we develop. But we're really interested in developing young leaders as well. And Paul, for the last almost year and a half now, you have gathered ten, twelve guys around. You tell us, give us just a little snapshot of what's happening.
Yeah, when I when I got here, I was just challenged to how can we, you know, go to this next level? How can we get deeper? How can we grow even closer, become more centered? And so we've basically been test piloting a model that we hope eventually will be available to everyone in the church. And so we've test piloted with just twelve young men. And we started off, like Brad said, a year and a half ago. And the model is Jesus. The model is Jesus hanging out with twelve guys for three years and then unleashing them on the world. And you know the story, you know how the story ends, it worked. And so we're just trying to say, we're not trying to, you know, reinvent the wheel, let's do what Jesus did. So we're getting these guys together, and we're doing ministry experiences, spiritual experiences together, and we're just watching them grow. Uh they're all actively involved, serving in many different capacities here in our church. In just a year and a half, we've seen a lot of growth in multiple ways. Uh we've seen two of the guys have, that were married, have children, have have babies. We've seen two of the guys that were in the group get married. We've seen two more of the guys get engaged. It's like a theme of like twos going on.
Reproduction.
Yeah, exactly. And we've seen a couple of the guys uh get get hired on staff here, and they're actually now like full-time staff members here. A couple of them are full-time staff members at The Well Coffee Shop. And one of the young men was selected to be an elder this year. And so these young men are absolutely growing in their faith exponentially, and they're not just sitting on their faith. It's not just a book faith, you know, a school faith, a learning, but they're actually putting it into practice right here in our local community, in our church, and all around here in The Well and off, all kinds of different places. So so far, it's been extremely successful, and we can't wait to finish the program. Uh this this last winter, all the guys, but one, one of them who decided to have a baby at the wrong time, he didn't get to go, but all the rest of them went to Israel with us. And many of them took their spouses or their spouses to be, and it was absolutely a life-changing experience for all those young men. So, yeah, fabulous.
Thank you, well done, Paul.
Yep.
Appreciate your leadership. Yep. All right, so Kev, you wanna come back up again? So this uh this idea, this notion of helping people grow from doubting, exploring, and so on, uh each one of our other ministry areas in family life, in our students and young adults, all have their own way. They don't necessarily use the same circle. Kevin has a different process, but still, we try to think through really strategically, how do we grow people to walk deeply into the kingdom with Jesus Christ in age-appropriate ways, in where they're at demographically, and so on? And so, Kev, tell us what you're doing with the family life area in this same way.
Yeah, absolutely. So you know me as coffee, but also family life ministry uh has been a big, huge passion. And what we, the kind of like end in mind of what we want is we want each and every child to be independently dependent on Jesus at some point in place where it's their decision and they're in that walk and that journey. And uh we know as a baby, you need you need help and support uh to live. But as you grow older, you become dependent. But when they reach that dependencies, they grow up into young adults, we want them to find themselves being completely dependent on Jesus. And so we want to meet them where they're at. We have this trajectory with a scope and sequence that covers um vital, critical, core information and uh of truth of who Jesus is, the Trinity, uh the gospel, um the story. And it becomes theirs, and they realize how, who they are and their identity in Jesus. It's a big deal. And I'll buy anyone coffee and walk you through that whole entire path if you want. I go crazy over it, I'm so excited about it. And it's working really well. We meet them where they're at, we teach them with how they can understand and where they learn uh and the methods. And we give them the right tools and the right pieces at the right time, and we go through that. Here's the big thing, uh as much as we work with the children through that, where we really go after is the adults, the parents. Um and uh I use this as an example is the, if you've ever watched The Dog Whisperer, have you guys seen that show? It's so good. Um he doesn't train the dogs, he trains the owner. And that's how the dogs learn. And what we want to do is we want to work with parents and equip parents to be spiritual disciplines and the the people leading their uh their children and their walk and their faith and helping them, guide them, and and put up, be the gap. And so we do all kinds of things along the path to uh meet the parents where they're at too in the child's development. So we, every six to seven weeks, we have um family date nights. We have parent activities where they get to come out with their kids and sometimes without their kids. We do parenting classes, we do all these different things and milestones along the way. Uh coming up just recently, like just like soon, is we have a father-son camp out where you get a camp right out on the on Copper Hills lawn here and uh set out tents and do a a father-son event and stay the night and do campfire songs and barbecue and all those silly things. Um but also get grow closer in that place. Um we'll do one with mother mothers and daughters, we'll do them with families, all those things. But here's a bigger one, we do these things called Understanding Baptism, where we bring the parents and the kids, and we go through this extensive uh class on uh teaching them about uh what baptism is and isn't, so that they will learn more, not to get them baptized, but so they start to develop the information of what it is and what it isn't. And we work with the parents that goes thirty days beyond the class to study, read together, pray together, journal, and type of things. But now, even this year coming up, uh which you all should be a part of, is called My Best For You. Uh this is the thing that's just attacking us, is you cannot count on the education, uh government, anyone else to tell your kids about sex education. We need Jesus's um word on it and God's word on it. And so we have a a class called My Best For You that we're we're not holding back anything. We're bringing in two subject matter experts, uh doctors, that are gonna come in and uh teach sex education to the kids and to the parents. Um and we'll separate the boys and the girls, and we'll do all of these things, but we're gonna talk about their identity and help them understand God's plan and purpose um and help them along the way. It's a two-day class, uh something really, really big. But these are some of the different types of things that we're trying to instill at the right place at the right time to help kids along their path because the world's gonna try to take them out in every other direction other than through Jesus. And we want to give them Jesus, we want to give them that truth and have them know who they are and their identity in Him.
Yep, Kevin, hold on just a second. We've got a, we had a question specifically for you. But first, uh this question was raised by somebody that wanted to say thank you to the Center for the Arts for all that they do for summer camps, all that you're doing with Nate and Heather and Nina for family date nights. But they wanted to know, would you be doing a VBS Bible service or something?
We do not do a VBS uh class itself. We do courses throughout the whole year that cover the different things that we're gonna teach and and go through, um which I can show you our scope and sequence. Uh we do work with the Center for the Arts. And in the Center for the Arts, there is biblical teaching along the way and path and prayer and 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 these pieces, and we encourage them from the well perspective and from the kids ministry to open that up area up for all summer long because it's gonna be really filled up. What we'll do is we'll continue to not take the kids individually or separately. We will continue to offer up classes and courses even through the summer that include the parents. And so you you'd have to see the different scope and sequence of of what we do with the parents and the kids, but we want to bring them together. We want to have a place where they're comfortable praying over each other, playing games together, having fun. In fact, we're looking at even a getaway up north where the families can go camping and do a couple nights getaway, three days uh as a camp, but you do it as a family. Does that make sense?
So in the last six, eight, ten months, something like that, Russell and Kevin and their teams have been having this discussion around this idea. If we had a child born here and we had them with us for eighteen years through high school, what would be the benchmarks, the spiritual benchmarks that we would love for them to see? What would be the trajectory of their growth? What would we have to do to help them move through that, those very stages of life along the way? So that when they do graduate from high school, they're ready to go to college and they're ready to to take on a a world that's a little rough and tumble at times, not that it isn't for students either. But that's been the thinking. And so, Russell, tell us a little what's happening in the students as that part of that continuum that you guys have been working on.
Yeah, so uh again, my name is Russell. I'm the youth pastor here, we work with the junior high and high school students. Um we follow the sim, the same model of doubter, explorer, growing, close, and centered. We do that in a lot of different ways.[1719.16] So our junior high and our high school students will meet on Sunday nights together, 5:00 PM for junior hires and 7:00 PM for high schoolers. And then we do some outreach events that we call alternative nights and Sunday fun days, about five times throughout the year. And we really try to connect opportunities for our students to grow closer to Jesus, to have a safe place to invite their friends, to feel welcomed, and to feel loved by Jesus as well. And so specifically what we try to do is we try to work on how can we as students grow, just like Jesus did from his teenage years, that we don't actually get to hear a lot about of, but it's in there in the Bible. And then how do we raise the bar in our faith in our current world and community? Because living in this world is hard as a Christian. It's not easy. You actually are an outsider now and you're not looked at as necessarily cool at times and as the person-to-be. We know that as adults, but in the student world, that's a huge thing that they're trying to work through. So we try to challenge our kids. We walk alongside them and how they can raise the bar in their faith, how they can show others the love of Christ, how they can show others how we're trying to do this because of who Jesus is to us and in us, and try to pour that out back to their friends and their peers, and sometimes even their families that they live with. We're trying to work on how we can get childcare on Sunday nights for our youth leaders. The reason being is one of the most awesome things for me is specifically being able to serve in our student ministry with other adults. Those adults range from young to old, and it's a wonderful time to do that with a team of people instead of having to serve and lead by yourself. And what I'm really trying to do is help our junior high and high school students see married couples serve together, because it's a wonderful opportunity for our students to get to see a healthy Christian marriage, serving alongside each other, loving each other, and pouring into the next generation. So we're working on getting childcare for Sunday nights, trying to fine-tune some details in that. It's also an excellent opportunity for our youth leaders to serve together as married couples. They'll get to see some cool things in each other. They'll get to see some cool things about how God has uniquely and individually blessed them. So those are some things we're working on. And then summer's coming up. Summer's a big time for student ministry. Similarly to what Kathy's doing in Center for the Arts, we have camps. A high school camp is happening June 19th through the 24th. That's going to be at Biola University with Christ and Youth, and we're going to be having a great time in California. And then our junior hires are going to UCYC, which is United Christian Youth Camp in Prescott, Arizona, July 10th through the 14th. Really excited about that. And then we like to strip down what summer youth group looks like for our students. We normally meet in the media auditorium here on campus. We try to meet at a person's house in a backyard and really just simplify what we do as a youth ministry, have it be more relational, more worship-led, more devotional-led, more small group-led. And so those are some things that we're trying to work on, that we're trying to do in our student ministry. Some really cool things that are happening in our youth group is we've got these high school student leaders that have chosen to be students that raise the bar in their life and wanting to take those next steps. And so we have six students, three guys and three girls that are taking on that challenge. And it's an opportunity for me to kind of have one-on-one mentorship with them and the other girl I work with named Nicole Santillo. And it's been really cool to watch these students say yes to raising the bar in their faith. They've been doing an excellent job of being a positive influence at youth group for our new friends that are showing up for underclassmen students. They're trying to fit in, connect with other people. And they're also doing a great job at inviting their friends to things like our alternative nights, our Sunday fun days, and even inviting them to youth group when we do crazy themed nights. Like we did a boomer night last night. We did a western night the night before. I know some of you won't like that. It's definitely not you, Brad. It's definitely not you.
A boomer is anybody older than you, right?
You know, high school students would think that and junior high students. So I had like at least four or five kiddos dressed as me. It was pretty cool. There's, there's a lot of really cool photos about that. But on top of student leaders, we have some amazing youth leaders that are serving. The whole culture of our student ministry that we're trying to create is that students would feel welcomed, seen, and loved as they enter into Copper Hill Student Ministry. And our youth leaders really champion that. They do an amazing job at showing up on Sunday nights, giving up some of their time and their energy, and really making our students feel welcome for who they are, seen for who they are, loved for who they are, but ultimately trying to sow Jesus back to them in those same ways, because Jesus welcomes them, Jesus sees them, and Jesus loves them. So I'm really proud of our youth leaders and our student leaders at the same time. And that's been a wonderful opportunity. I want to share a quick story about something that happened at one of our winter retreats that we did over January. One of our student leaders invited one of their friends. They just changed like their whole athletic career, they said, from basketball to cheerleading. And they made a whole new type of friend group in cheerleading than in basketball. And so this student of ours has been beginning to know a lot of these kids that they're doing cheerleading with. And she's been making friends with them. She's been inviting them to youth group. And one of her friends in particular, she invited to our winter camp experience. It was over the weekend at United Christian Youth Camp in Prescott. And it was really cool. Actually, I didn't get to go because I was the one that had the baby at Paul earlier. But it was really cool to hear the story that came back. This girl that got invited said to her friend, hey, thank you so much for inviting me to this camp over the weekend. I walked away from God and I didn't care about Jesus or the church anymore. And after this weekend of camp, I decided to say yes to Jesus again. And so thank you for doing that. And that's exactly what we're trying to do for our students. We're trying to grow them close to the Jesus and have them raise the bar in their faith so others can join in with them, maybe get to see life change happen through that. And that was just a really cool story to hear. There's a lot of things that are happening like that in our student ministry, but that was just one in particular that I wanted to highlight.
Fantastic.
Yeah, so consistently it'll range anywhere from about 15 to 20 junior hires and then about 35 to 45 high schoolers. It just depends on what we're doing in the weeknight and if kids are doing their homework or not.
That's right. Right on. Thank you, Russell. Paul, just this last, last weekend, we had somebody here for their very first time. And they, they stopped in the plaza and say hello, introduce themselves. Their first comment was, how do you get so many young people in the church? Like they come from a church that's a little different experience than that. And to have so many students and young adults, Paul, that it bodes really well for the, for the future of, of the church. It does. And so I know when you first joined our team and so on, we talked about this idea of maybe gathering some young adults, which was an add-on to what you were already committing to do. And it's really become a ministry in an amazing way in these kids' lives.
Yeah, absolutely. It really feels like in just the church in general in the United States of America, the forgotten group of people is young adults, college kids, people in their twenties. Like I would guarantee you that if you went to almost every single church in the Arizona area, they all have probably either a, a youth pastor who's on staff or a volunteer youth leader, and that means like high school down. But I guarantee you, like 80% of those churches have nobody helping with college and young adults. You can look it up. This is by far a forgotten generation. And so when we were just attending here as a family before I came on staff, my daughter and another intern here named Andrew had tried to start up a young adult ministry. And so there was like six or seven of them meeting in the coffee shop once a week. And then my daughter went away to Italy and I came on staff and she said, Dad, would you kind of take this over? You know, and kind of good luck, and just threw it in my lap. And so there was like six or seven of us that started meeting a couple of years ago. And now we went from meeting in our, our rental house and we didn't have enough space anymore to now we meet here at the church. And there's, you know, 35, 40, 45 of us that gather every single week. And it's been such an amazing experience. It's been such a safe place for all those young adults to come. We have people ranging from ages 18 all the way to like 31, 32. We have some people that are getting up in their thirties and like, we don't want to leave. This is like home. This has been amazing. This has been fun for us. We've married people out of the group. We've sent people to different missions and church experiences. They've moved on to other places as a result of that. And so absolutely, it's just a thriving community. And a total side note, something we never had planned again, but this is the way God worked is there's been an amazing amount of special needs kids that have started to come into this ministry. And I say kids, they're in their twenties. But on any given night, we might have 35, 40 young people and five or six or seven of them might be like high-functioning autistic kids in the room, which is just like unheard of. It's unbelievable. And so it's been such an amazing, like side ministry, so to speak, to see come about. And as the words got out that we welcome these special needs young people, then more and more are coming and feeling safe and feeling comfortable. And so like, we just got back. There's a couple of young adults in the back right now. I just want to say shout out to them. They just got off the, the van with me in Mexico and they're here tonight. Would you make some noise for them?
Yeah.
They've been serving, serving all weekend in Mexico and luckily took a shower and came and joined us. I'm proud of you guys. But they can, they can attest to just, we've, we've taken now a couple of young adults that are special needs to the Navajo Indian Reservation, to Mexico multiple times, and to Israel, all the way to Israel. You know, and it's just like, I would have never in my wildest dreams ever thought I'd be doing something like that. And so it's been such a blessing to our young adult ministry, and I think it's been a blessing to our church community as well.
Yeah, fantastic.
Actually, one of our texters said that you are, they're trying to affirm you. They just simply said you're stuck.
Thank you. Yeah, well.
Thank you.
Good job. All right. Let me introduce Jim to you. Jim is our executive director and he keeps numbers and tallies and systems and policies and procedures and has helped us grow up as a church from a church plant to something that's a little more organized. Yeah. Thank you, Jim. Yeah, well, you are.
So this is the fun part of the evening. Here's the numbers. Everybody pull out their slide rules, their projectors. Here we go. So Tyler, if you could advance the next slide, the first thing I want to show is just an attendance trend. So what you're going to see there, the important piece is we were growing on a very nice trajectory. Right around 2017 would be this facility really opening and starting to expand. And then about three years later, something happened in 2020. And we had to ungather for exactly five months. And since then, it has been a wonderful regathering effort. You'll see that we have grown. It took a while for us to become the in-person church again. You'll see that little orange band, which is our views. And when we look at our views, we actually think that it's not just one person viewing. It's typically two and a half people viewing. So when we look at this graph and we see that our average weekly attendance is about 1,100, you could probably add another 400 that are consistently watching us online. That's the reach of Copper Hill's church and what we're trying to do in the community. So Tyler, if you want to advance it to the next one, here's the fun stuff, everybody. The reality of it is, one of the fun things about what I get to do is I get to work with Excel spreadsheets. But there's magic around those Excel spreadsheets. It is the generosity of our church family to run, support, help us operate the type of programs that Russell was talking about, the type of mission trips that Paul's talking about, help set the, set in motion what's happening at the Center for the Arts, build that coffee shop so that we can be the center of the community. That is the exciting part for me, is to be able to look and see that $2.1 million was budgeted and we actually, we actually collected $2.3. And all of that is based on the generosity of this church family. And our job is to be good stewards to that. We are trying our very best to do expense control, to reduce the operating overhead, the admin, so that we can support these ministries, get people out there to share our faith and our love for Jesus. So just a couple of things I want to share is that, as I mentioned, we brought in about $2.3 million. That does not include income at The Well and the Center for the Arts. I'll show that in just a second. That also does not include some very huge amounts of benevolence. We raised $146,000 for Ukraine as well as Ireland and Romania last year. That is absolutely fantastic. In addition, when we came to the church family for the capital campaign, we have already secured, half a million dollars has been brought in thus far last year, 2022, for the Well Project Three, which represents about a third, just a little bit, a little bit under a third of our actual projected costs for that particular project. So we're very excited about that. We want to thank you for your generosity. We've also tried to be good stewards expense-wise. So for the second consecutive year, we've been paying down our existing debt. We've been doing this at a, at a clip of $135,000 per year. We are currently still doing that and looking to add to that this year. And we think that's very important. Not only taking those dollars, but building or reducing our liabilities. The other pieces that we've really come to understand is, as I mentioned, we ungathered for a period of time. We now have all-time growth for the church as well as for the Center for the Arts, The Well. Obviously, more growth means more expenses. We now think we have a very good handle on what those expenses are. We think we have a very good understanding of what they are as a percentage of our income, how to manage them, how to try to reduce them as well. So those are very important aspects for us. So we do have a little bit of a surplus, but we're thinking about what does that look like in terms of paying down our debt or putting those dollars towards the Well Three project, which we'll talk about in just a few minutes. Thank you, Tyler. If you want to go ahead to the next one. As I mentioned, we're starting to get to that space where we need to separate the financial reporting for the Center for the Arts as well as The Well from the church. So we wanted to give you these financial results. The key piece of it here is not the dollar amounts. It's the fact that we have what I call two macro ministries that are sustaining themselves. That is key for us. The ability for these entities to, with their very disparate operations, the very different way that they minister and they reach our community, the ability for them to sustain themselves financially. So there's some numbers there for you to look at. We did project a loss last year and we had our very first surplus at the Center for the Arts. That is driven by very strong growth. As you can imagine, after COVID, we had to rebuild the camps, right Kathy? Couldn't do any camps. We had to rebuild the private lessons and the dance camps. So we've seen 26% growth, I believe the number was, and 34% growth respectively across dance and private lessons. So it's been a phenomenal opportunity to grow. But it's not about the number of people that are attending. It's about the message that they're receiving from their instructors, the love that they're seeing, their use of God-given talent. So we're very excited about that. And Kevin shared The Well. What does it mean for the community? And it is amazing to watch what happens day after day, the different types of people that come in throughout the day. The moms that are coming and dropping off their kids, the business people that are working on proposals. The most exciting thing is to see all of these different age groups doing Bible studies and having those conversations that are, that we really want The Well to be. So very exciting to see that. That, The Well did not show a surplus last year, but that is because we bought some supplies in bulk and we did not decide to depreciate or, or spread those out in terms of an accrual process. So we wanted to take, we just felt it was best to do it that way. And if anyone wants to deep dive into that, more than happy to do so. So Tyler, go ahead and go to the next slide. I wanted to give a Well Three project update. So the key piece of this is we had a goal of raising 1.9 million. We so far, between pledges, gifts, and some dollars that we put aside, we currently have close to 1.6 million. So our gap is now just over 300,000. So we have 16% left to, left to fund. So that is very exciting for us. I can tell you personally, this is a project that I have a lot of passion about. I just spent some time with two very dear friends that I met at The Well, that we were sitting outside and we were having a conversation. We both have golden retrievers. I did not know a golden retriever conversation could last an hour and a half, but if you're with my wife and she sees a dog, it's going to be at least an hour. We, we ended up becoming friends with them. We ended up really being able to spend time with them, to get deep relationships with them. We vacation with them, all based on the fact that we wanted to be a gathering spot and to grow deeper with people. So this is absolutely fantastic to see these types of results. So I'm sure you all have a couple of questions about where we are in the construction process. Brad, give us an update.
Let me, let me catch you up there. So here's the timeline on this. We're in a design phase right now. We're close to going to the city, looking for permits from the city. We've been told it's anywhere from an eight to 12 week period of time there. So we're expecting the earliest possible start of construction would be the end of May. That's still what our general contractor is targeting. He believes it's a four to five month build. And so that would put us the end of October, early November, by the time that it's actually functional and operational for us. In some ways, that works perfectly for us because the, the usage in that plaza drops significantly during the summer. It's just too hot to, to be there. And so it'll be under construction during that time, ready for kind of early fall, early winter. And I, I'm like, you know, I'm excited about the ministry opportunities that are going to happen in that space. If you're here on some occasions in the coffee shop, there isn't room in the coffee shop for people to sit. And so they spill out into that area. Now they're going to have a space where they can spill out even further than that. And we think that's going to enhance those conversations that happened already. This is a new venue for our Center for the Arts to be able to use, to display some of the arts, to do some other recitals and so, so on in that new space. But here's the other thing. It is 4,000 square feet for our students to use, our young adults to use, our life groups to use. It's, it will be space that is well-used. It's the last 4,000 feet that we can get back and make usable, because we can increase the size of our footprint of our building itself. We're as big as we can get on this space. We can't go up, but there is that one space that we can environmentally control and make it usable 12 months of the year to fulfill the mission and vision of what it is that we're doing. It's wonderful to see our church come alongside and support this and before it, like to get to the place where we're down to what, 16% of our goal left to go, 300,000? That is a, that's in a compliment to the generosity of our church and the commitment to the vision of what Jesus gave us, which wasn't to build a facility. Remember, like if you've been around for like 10, 12 years, we did this ridiculous thing where we said, we want to raise money to build a building for our community, and it's not going to be necessarily what we want. By then, we had learned that we as a church could gather in parks and schools and multipurpose rooms and a theater, wherever we could meet. It didn't matter. But not, there wouldn't be just any building our community would see as their building, that it was their space that they could come into and call it their home. And that's what we have raised money on all these years. And you have agreed with that vision and you supported it. And we're going to carry on with that and see lives changed in wonderful ways. If you get a chance to meet a guy by the name of Mark Williams, he's our project manager on this. He has an extensive background. He's got a general contractor's license, and I love working with this guy. He's sharp as a whip and knows this stuff, and he's going to protect our church. Well, he represents us to protect our interests. Our architect does that as well, and we've got a great general contractor. But it's just one more level of protection for us who just looks after our interest in this project. So if you get to know Mark, you'll enjoy getting to know him. So that's a bit of a timeline update for.
Thank you. All right. The last part of Fun with Financials is what are we doing this year? So Tyler, if you can do that, we'll show you the 2023 budget. So the reality of our budgeting process is, as Brad mentioned, we go from, we look at how do we reach out to doubters? How do we reach? So the reality of our budgeting process is, as Brad mentioned, we go from, we look at how do we reach out to doubters? How do we reach out to explorers, et cetera? The other piece of this, and I was a corporate guy for 30 years. More importantly, I worked with lawyers who dealt with life in point one increments of an hour. So when we talk about budgeting through a prayerful process and thinking through how the vision and the mission of this church and how that feeds the ministries, it is a very intentional process that we use to look at how we spend the dollars that you bring in or you donate to us. We want to be very careful and mindful for the, with those. So we balance our faith with giving trends and come up with where are we? So we use a lot of run rates from 2022. As I mentioned, we brought in about 2.3. We're anticipating 2.5, 2.6 next year. We're anticipating an 11% or budgeting an 11% growth. As we mentioned, we're growing. We're also envisioning more expenses. We've also built in certain expenses are related to Well Project Three. We've thought about economic conditions and have looked at inflationary factors and built that in. So that's why you see it being 16% compared to the 11% on the revenue or the income side. We've also started to budget in some facility expenses. So where Jacob is sitting back there, we had to make some enhancements of the soundboard and some of the ancillary equipment to that. We're doing some things here in the auditorium to prepare for Well Project Three. We're doing some things in family life to enhance their worship experience. So there are some things that are, we've built into the budget to take care and enhance those worship, worship experiences for our families. We've also then looked about continuing to pay down our debt and understanding that we're going to have to be very mindful in terms of contingency. We're not really sure how the finances are going to go. It's a very challenging time. We're also in a capital campaign. So we're being very mindful of those things. The other piece we're having to factor in is staffing replacements and what does that labor market look like? And we're going to have to anticipate potentially more expense associated with that. So hopefully that explains at a very high level why our, our expenses are a little bit higher this upcoming year. If any of you want to deep dive into any of this, I'm more than happy to nerd out. We can go over a spreadsheet, grab a cup of coffee and I'm sorry, what, what was that? Were you offering a cup of coffee or a spreadsheet, Kevin? Which one? Happy to address any questions. And if you have any, any information you'd like, be more than happy to share that with you. So.
Right on. Thank you, Jim. Well done. I want to support what Jim has said. We, if you're part of Copper Hills, we are so happy to share our financial statements with you. This is an overview, but if you are interested in that, these are not private documents. We don't send them out generally because we love to send them to people who are part of Copper Hills and not, you know, just out into the, the atmosphere. And so if you are interested, those are, there's more comprehensive data available for you. Okay. Any other questions that came up? I know there was one more question.
There was, there was one, an additional one. How will the construction work affect access to the auditorium and services?
Yeah. Great question. So we're working with our general contractor on this one. He does not know precisely how that's going to work. Generally speaking, he is going to give us full access to the various areas and he can do that a couple of ways. One is to run scaffolding throughout the whole plaza area with archways or pathways through the scaffolding to protect it. There's really about three weeks of construction where it's all overhead work. We're putting beams in place and putting the roof decking in place. And then once that's in place, it's more localized within that plaza area. So there is about a three-week period of time where we'll have interesting access to the various parts of the building. We do have other ways to get into the auditorium and other rooms and other parts of the building that are affected with that. The precise details, we don't know, but he is aware. He's put that into his proposal, how to give us continued access. The fire department will be very interested in what his ideas are. So it's not just what he wants to do. He will have to get approval from the fire department. So egress and ingress work well for them that they're satisfied with that. So that's that was the question? I think so. Okay. Then there was a question that someone asked how we could together pray for our staff. And I really appreciate you would ask that question. I wouldn't, I don't know that there are specific things for individual staff. I think you could ask each one of our staff personally what's going on in their world and their life. But there's always leadership challenges. There's care and compassion for people who are hurting and struggling. We get phone calls from people who tell us, hey, I headed to the hospital or this is going on in my, in my life. I have this treatment that's I'm undergoing. So there's always health things that, that concern us and trouble us for our church family. And so how to, how to pastor and care for people in those kinds of ways. There are family struggles that people have and all of those things weigh on us as pastors because that's the nature of what a pastor is. You care for, you care for people. And so you pray for strength for sure. You pray for wisdom. But I would say more than anything, would you pray for us that we would grow to love and live in the love of Christ more deeply every day ourselves? That that would be rich for us, that Jesus would reveal himself to us, that the scriptures would be alive for us, our personal spiritual disciplines would enrich our souls and our lives. You only can lead out of that kind of strength. And so if you'll pray for us on that level, that would be great. And then that's a great question to ask each of our pastors privately and separately because we all will have things going on in our world and our life. So.